Tom is ready to go with the live streaming and we're good. Good to go, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolz. At this time, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Sandusky City Planning Commission on June 24th. It's actually 4:31. I would ask the meeting secretary to please call the roll.
Here, Waylon, he's a little late, I guess. Magori?
Here.
Gleeah?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, I'm not hearing Kristen. I wonder if she could maybe just try speaking up. Everyone else is loud and clear and Kristen, you're both breaking up and you're very, at very low volume.
Okay.
I don't even know if you called my name.
Can you hear me better now?
I can, yes.
Yeah, much better.
I have to call in using my phone, so I was on speakerphone, but maybe you can hear me better if I hold it up, so.
Yes, much better.
Mr. Zulov?
Here.
And Commissioner Meinzler?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. The first matter on the agenda is approval of the meetings of the minutes from the May 27th, 2020 meeting. Has everybody received a copy of those minutes and had a chance to review them? Any, any questions or comments or deletions or additions? I think Mr. Zulov.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zulov.
Last paragraph, I actually sent some wording, just to change a couple of words, to clarify that we're talking about my comment about pedestrians and crossing one-way streets to clarify that we're talking about pedestrians, not necessarily cars crossing the street. And so if that's, change is acceptable, that's all, that's all I had.
Okay, any other comments or observations? Mr. Zulov, am I to assume that you're making a motion to approve the minutes with that, those modifications as submitted by email to the staff?
Well, yes, I would make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman, David Miller.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, I will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, minutes have been approved. The next matter on the agenda is a site plan application for a new use at 317 East Washington Street filed by Mr. Jeff Foster on behalf of the Market Street Collective. I'm presuming that staff would like to...
Mac Leir, Hody Enterprises.
Is now joining.
Okay, welcome. Presuming the staff has some comments for it on that site plan application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just for those of joining us, if you could mute your microphone, please, thank you. There we go. This is a site plan application for a new use at 317 East Washington Street. The applicant is proposing to utilize the existing building, formerly the Cardinal Grocery Store, for a food hall and retail space. The existing zoning is downtown business district. You could see the parcel that is proposed to be utilized highlighted in red. The existing use, it is vacant, it has been vacant since Cardinal Grocery closed a few years ago. The site is adjacent to other downtown business districts, zone parcels, and across the street from residents, zoned to family residential. The applicant is proposing to completely reimagine the space and utilize some of the former excess parking areas just to the west of the building for outdoor dining and play. The interior space will be utilized as a food hall and some small retail components. It is meant to be a highly flexible space inside and out that can be transformed based on the demand and needs. The applicants wish to close off vehicular traffic access from Washington Street and only utilize this, the city-owned parking area to the north for vehicular ingress and egress. The applicant is proposing to designate 48 parking spaces. Section 1149 of the Planning and Zoning Code would require 91 spaces for the proposed use. The applicant did request a variance for this requirement for the Board of Zoning Appeals last week, and that was tabled. Therefore, staff would like to utilize Section 1149.06D and request that commission modify the requirements for this site to the 48 proposed. Staff believes that the 48 proposed spaces combined with nearby public parking and on-street parking will be more than enough parking to supply the proposed use. The applicant does meet all required aisles and stallways and is proposing to add two new landscaping islands with trees. The applicant is also proposing to add trees between the city-owned parking area to the north as well as some new grass landscaping to formalize the new parking area against the city-owned parking area to the north. The applicant has also expressed adding additional bicycle parking along Washington and a drop-off zone as well. The details for Washington continue to be discussed with engineering to make sure it is done well and does not create a hindrance to traffic or pedestrians along Washington. Staff did request a detailed lighting plan as well as a landscaping plan that showed more than what is provided in the site plan, but the, the details have not yet been decided. So with that, planning staff recommends approval of the proposed site plan for 609 East Perkins Avenue with the following conditions. All applicable building permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, and any other applicable agency. Planning Commission, and this is different from your staff reports, Planning Commission modified the requirements set forth in Section 1149.05 to prevent 48 spaces for the proposed use. A lighting cut sheet is provided showing location of proposed exterior lighting and lighting be dark sky friendly and shielded from residential property. A landscaping plan is provided that meets requirements set forth in Section 1149.09 of the City of Sandusky Planning and Zoning Code. That's all I have. The applicant is, our representative is on the call if you would like to have further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolz. As Chairman, I have a question for staff. The, the suggested reduction to 48 spaces for parking, are those 48 spaces in the city-owned parking lot?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, no, this would be the proposed, the spaces that are owned by the property owner, and they are to the north of the building. They were, they were there when the Cardinal Grocery was in business.
So, so the city lot, which would have additional spaces further to the north, would be available if necessary and as available?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So I'm going to ask if the, if the applicant would like to make any further comment or explanation.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things I'd like to add on the parking. We did a windshield survey of on-street spaces, and in addition to the 48 that we're providing on-site, there's approximately 200 spaces within a one-block radius of this, so we feel that there's, there's adequate parking in the area. With regard to the curb cut along Washington Street, the primary reason for that is, is obviously for food pickup, and as we found in the last few months, the food hall being a model that has a lot of different craft food options really lends itself well to food delivery, so we see a lot of that, those transactions taking place in that drop-off. And we think eliminating the curb cut along Washington as well just makes it a much more pedestrian-friendly area. That's all I'd like to add, I'm open for any, open for any questions.
Thank you. As, as Chairman, I'd like to ask staff again, now I'm just noticing the recessed area for the food pickup along Washington, does that require any, any approval by the city, or can that just be done as part of the site plan?
Mr. Chairman, that would require approval through Engineering Department, however, with approval from Planning Commission, it would be a smoother process. I do notice Commissioner Meinzler has his hand raised.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Meinzler, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't do that on purpose, I'll say.
Oh, oh, you were just scratching your chin, all right. All right, any, any further questions or observations either to staff or the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zulov.
I don't know how to raise my hand here, and there's no, seems to be no option on the screen. It's iPad. So first, I'd say this is very exciting, I want to congratulate the, presumably Economic Development as well as the Planning Department, working with, on this project, and it looks like really excellent work on the part of the applicant, the architect. This is, this is a really exciting development and something we need downtown. I wish I had looked at it a little sooner. I think it's important to consider the possibility that, that what is currently used as a parking lot to, just to the north, is planted as a market ground, was considered as an alternative market ground to the parking lot that is now the, we're calling the BG Project. And I think needs to remain flexible as, as, as alternative uses. So I would have, I would have encouraged getting the entry and exit together. I understand the advantages to have an entry, you know, an in lane and an out lane, but I can see the, the need to maybe eventually have the flexibility of creating a lane right across that market ground, as this is now going to be the only way to get in and out of that private parking spot, rather than having to drive one way or another down the market ground, therefore obviating some potential uses and events. That said, we've come this far and it's, it's a parking lot, there's, it's not impossible to change it later or, or work around that issue, so it looks great.
Any other comments or observations?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Meinzler.
I, just to comment on, on Mr. Zulov's, or follow up on that, you know, in, in his supporting documents, it does talk about walkability and bicycles will, will make up a lot of the, the traffic, foot traffic, so the, I think that's important to consider when we're making this decision, so.
Thank you, Mr. Meinzler. Any other comments or observations?
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up on, on the bicycle part, I think Commissioner Meinzler reminds me of a point that I hadn't thought about, is that having separate entries and exits is probably arguably slightly less pedestrian and bicycle friendly. I don't know about pedestrians, but anything one-way tends to have people looking the wrong way, you know, unless they're aware of that it's a one-way street. So it's, it's a minor point, but I, I think I'm, I'm just, I guess, thinking out loud about what Commissioner Meinzler said, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Zulov. Any other comments or observations? Okay, hearing none, would anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, who is it?
Uh, Mr. Gleeah.
Okay, Mr. Gleeah, I don't, I don't have your picture on my screen, so go ahead.
Yeah, I, I had to call in, I'm not, don't have the capability. I would propose that we accept, and I'll, I'll need a little bit of, of help possibly from the clerk, but if I recall, we would be moving to accept the staff recommendation of approval of the site plan for this particular property. And if I, I'm looking at the staff recommendation, which, which suggested that the staff, that the applicant receive a waiver from the Board of Zoning Appeals, but instead of that, proposing that the, the parking requirement be waived, which I think Mr. Bolz asked us to do, but in the event that there's any ambiguity about that, I, I would propose that the parking requirement be waived to accept a 48-space proposed parking plan.
So, Mr. Gleeah, I, as I take your motion or hear your motion, it's to accept the staff, staff recommendation as reported today verbally at the meeting?
Correct, if I, if I understood Mr. Bolz correctly, he was asking for that verbally, and so accepting that particular recommendation in lieu of the written recommendation for a zoning variance.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, David Miller, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zulov.
I presume then it would obviate the need for the variance and the applicant could simply withdraw the application for the, for the variance?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Zulov, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments, our discussion on the, the motion?
Mr. Chairman, David Miller?
Yes, yes, Mr. Miller.
I would like to echo the sentiments I've heard, that I think this is an exciting potential development, especially in light of the development of the Cedar Point Campus Downtown. I think it will be a great amenity for a more walkable downtown and, and make downtown friendlier for people who live there to have dining options and other options in walking and biking distance. I, I think it's, it's great.
I, I will add my agreement 100% to everything you just said. Any, any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gleeah?
Yes, just briefly, not only do I think this is a great project, I think it's a, it's a good example of ways we can do infill development, ways that we can repurpose buildings. Obviously, we're sad to lose a downtown grocer, but I think they have food service, replace that in being the same building and have kind of a, if not a, quite a historical building, certainly a, a building that's a local landmark and, and will have a cool retro appeal to it. It adds to the walkability of the neighborhood, and the other thing I want to point out is I think this is, this is another example of where the, the parking requirements and the ordinance should be perhaps reviewed and, and with an eye towards updating. I know we've discussed that in the past, and, and I think this is an example of where perhaps our, our parking requirements can maybe better reflect the needs of the community. I think when you look at the particular site, there's quite a bit of alternative parking, and we're also, we have a site where people will walk, will ride bikes, and other will be alternative modes of transportation. So I think having to require 90 spaces for a project like this would have been overkill. I think our downtown area has a lot of alternative public parking, and, and so this, this, I think, just, you know, is a good example of a reason we should perhaps rethink parking requirements in the future, but I just wanted to add that note.
Thank you, Mr. Gleeah. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask that the roll be called as a vote on the motion?
Mr. Magori?
Yes.
Mr. Gleeah?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zulov?
Yes.
Commissioner Meinzler?
Yes.
And I see Mr. Waylon is on now?
Yep, I'm here, yes, I voted for it.
Okay, it, was that everybody?
Yes.
I guess it was.
Jackson did not hear.
Okay, but I, was Mr. Miller's name called?
Yes.
Okay, so it appears that the vote is unanimous in favor of the motion, so the motion passes. And I guess, Mr. Foster, congratulations, I, I again, think everybody on the commission appears to feel that this is a big move forward for the community, so good luck.
It's very exciting, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So the, the next order of business on the, today's agenda is a site plan application for a new use at 609 East Perkins Avenue, filed by Jason, and I'm not sure if it, if it's pronounced Tussing or Tousing, but either way, that's how it's been filed, and I'll then turn it over to staff to explain the application a little further to the commission.
Unmute, let me unmute my microphone first. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a site plan application for a new use at 609 East Perkins Avenue. The applicant is proposing to remodel an existing building on the site to be used as a delivery and takeout food business. As you can see in the picture, the site was most recently utilized for a check cashing type business. The existing zoning is general business, and it has been vacant for a short period of time. The site is adjacent to other business district zone parcels and to the south of single-family residential zone parcels. The applicant is proposing to remove some of the front portion of the building and utilize that area to create a better pedestrian entrance. There will be no sit-down space in this proposed use. So the applicant requested two variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals last week, variance request for seven spaces to the, from the required 17 or 18 spaces, and a variance to the requirement of a three-foot landscape buffer between the parcels. They were both approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The applicant is proposing to add more landscape buffers to the south between the building and Perkins Avenue, and two landscaping islands in the northeast and northwest corners of the site to buffer the site from the residential properties and alleyway. Staff did request that the applicant provide lighting cut sheets and locations as well as a detailed landscaping plan, but these items are yet to be determined. In conclusion, planning staff recommends approval of the proposed site plan with the following conditions. All applicable building permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, and any, any other applicable agency. The number two, did occur variance request are approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Three, a lighting cut sheet is provided showing location of proposed exterior lighting and lighting be dark sky friendly and shielded from residential property. And four, a landscaping plan is provided that meets the requirements set forth in Section 1149.09 of the City of Sandusky Planning and Zoning Code. And that is all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicants are on for further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolz. I'm going to turn now to the applicant or applicants to make any comment they care to make in addition to what's been said by staff.
Mr. Chairman, Jason Tusing here.
Yes.
We, we don't have, I don't have anything to add to, to the notes.
Okay, um, thank you. I guess, at this point, I guess it's appropriate to ask if anyone would care to make a motion on the application?
Mr. Chairman, David Miller, I will make the motion to approve subject to staff conditions and recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay, and that's Mr. Zulov, right? Yeah, okay. So it's been moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, David here?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to wax nostalgic, was this both the previously Subway and maybe the Marcos Pizza before that, does anybody recall?
I think it may have been, I think it may have been a fried chicken place years ago, too.
So the history, Jason Tusing here, so the history that I've heard is at one point it was a Diamond Savings and Loan, and then at some point it was a Subway. The Marcos Pizza is actually located east a couple lots, it's still actually there and functioning.
Okay, well, when, when it was Subway, and, and I just, I remember going to Subway and there was a couple of parking spots out front, and they don't appear to be there now, like, was there an addition put on the front of the building that, that took up some of that space and, and you're taking that addition off to reduce the square footage and make that better entrance, is that what's going on?
Actually, actually, I believe the front, I don't think the front has been added on to, I think there were, or was two parking places there, but very, very tight parking places. That was, and I guess is one of the reasons we are adjusting the square footage for the tenant, they would like to have some additional parking out front there and just clean that whole area up a little bit.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zulov.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mac Leir from Hody Enterprises, and just to add to comment, starting to jump in here, I'm actually sitting in the parking lot of 317 East Washington, just for reference, but the, the reason for the lack of parking spaces at the front of the building, that was part of the widening of Perkins Avenue, and that was gobbled up by ODOT, so we lost all the front parking spots, which I think there may have been four that were removed due to the widening of Perkins Avenue.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Yes, perfect sense, to my recollection of more space there, now I know where it went.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Uh, okay, appreciate that. Appreciate that clarification on, on the parking. One other, maybe almost trivial point, and I'm going to vote to approve this, but I might suggest taking a second look at the positioning of the three diagonal spaces on the north side of the lot. Traffic coming through the lot from the south, from Perkins, turning left to go around to the drive-through, might have a tough time clearing that, a larger vehicle parked diagonally there, but has plenty of room to turn left to go south through the drive-through, and it might be worth reviewing to shift those three spots west slightly to kind of balance that. I don't care if the applicant doesn't care, I don't, I certainly don't care, but I just, it was just an observation that, that might make the overall site easier to navigate. It has my vote.
Okay, any, any further, it's been moved and seconded, I think, I got interrupted here, so any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I guess we'll call the roll on the application itself?
Mr. Gleeah?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zulov?
Yes.
Commissioner Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Magory?
Yes. Okay, um, I guess the motion has passed unanimously, uh, again, congratulations, Jason, um, good luck with that. And, uh, looking further on at today's agenda, uh, there is none, so, uh, does anybody have anything which needs to be brought before this meeting, before we adjourn or ask for an adjournment motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Greg.
Yes.
Mac Lair, Hody Enterprise.
Is now exiting.
I am just, uh, letting you know, we did, we do have a couple items for July's, uh, agenda already, um, today's the deadline, so we should only have the two, uh, but we do have a application that just came in that may require a special meeting, um, it is a, an application for an area that has flooding currently, um, so I may request next week to see if we could get a quorum for the week of the fifth of July to hold a special meeting.
Okay.
It should be a fairly quick meeting.
Okay.
Could, could, could we have some idea of the nature of this?
Yeah, um, through the Chairman to Mr. Zulov, it's for, um, the location next to Jackson Street Pier, the Beck Lane Buildings parking lot, uh, they're just looking to modify the parking area so that it doesn't flood.
Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I, I'm okay with a special meeting, so, just let us know.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zulov.
Uh, some of us may recall that we have, from time to time, looked at lighting, uh, I know it's not a great time to do it, but, uh, maybe, do, does anyone have any thoughts on whether this should be a priority or not? Uh, I, I really don't want to propose trying to task the staff with addressing it right at the moment, and it's a moving target anyway because lighting technology is changing so quickly, um, but we've got, uh, gaping holes in our, uh, i- i- in, in, in that regard, most communities at this point have some sort of lighting ordinance, and we have very little, uh, and it might not be too difficult, it, sometime in the next year to get to the point where we have at least some coverage, it doesn't need to be in, in all kinds of gory detail, but give us a light to stand on to, uh, insist on reasonable lighting standards, and also to give a citizen who's, has light trespass being imposed upon them a light to stand on, uh, beyond just general nuisance to, to object to, uh, unreasonable light trespass on their property. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I, I think that's an appropriate thought process, um, I, I'll note that you're continuing interest in that area, um, you mentioned that other cities may have progressed further in that area as far as, um, monitoring and, and limiting light, light usage, uh, would you want to try to latch on to one of those ordinances or codes and, and maybe go through it and then present it to the city?
I, I would, I would be happy to assist in any way, uh, I can, and if, uh, the board is amenable to that, I would, I would be happy to, uh, put a little elbow grease into it.
I think that would be good, yeah.
Uh, David Miller, I for one would be appreciative if Mr. Zulov would undertake that effort. I, I recognize that, uh, lighting standards is something we've talked about for a long time at this body, I recognize that, as Mr. Zulov has observed, those, um, those technologies have been evolving fairly quickly, but, uh, black sky is something that I personally appreciate, and nuisance, I think, a lot of people appreciate not having, so, uh, that would be great, in my opinion, if Mike would do that.
Okay, and then we can take a look at whatever you come up with, and, and as can staff, so.
Sure.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, anything further from anybody? Okay, hearing, hearing nothing, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Zulov, a second to that?
Second, Mr. Miller.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, I guess that's it, motion passed, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good job.
All right, thank you, thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm starting to become a little literate with the-